It is now called to order, this is October 17th, 2016, at 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Kathleen, who do roll call, please?
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambell?
Here. Okay. Tonight, starting off, we have two proclamations, well, actually, three. The first two are the winners of the City of Burlington Seventh Grade Essay Contest 2016. And we already announced them at City Day, so we're going to make it official tonight. So, and also, I didn't realize that they were getting money, too. There's, they've got some chamber bucks as well going along with this, so, exciting. Well, without, without any more delay. This first one is, whereas promoting good city government is important to the citizens of Burlington, and whereas an essay contest entitled "If I Were Mayor" was open to Burlington's Seventh Grade Students to provide students the opportunity to reflect on the role of the key elected official in our city, and whereas our future mayors are in classrooms today, the education they receive helps them to become good citizens and good mayors, and whereas essays were judged based on creativity, clarity, sincerity of thought, and proper use of grammar, a winner from each school is selected, and whereas the City of Burlington is a great place to live, work, and play, know it. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, do hereby proclaim, Matty Drew, winner of the City of Burlington Notre Dame Seventh Grade Essay Contest 2016, signed and sealed the 17th day of October 2016, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor. Matty Drew, would you come on down, please? You're a rock star. You know, what can I say? When I grow up, I want to be just like you. A boy sent to the chamber, you know what I mean? Got your picture taken with you? If you want, I can help you spend it. I'm good at stuff like that. Awesome. That is for you. And Matty Drew, would you like to come and have a word? Would you like to say, say anything? Just all of Burlington looking at you. Come on over here. Come on. Step lively this way. All righty then. This is great.
Um, I... I think that it's important that we're getting a K-9 unit in the police department, and I think if I were to grow up and become mayor, I would add on to that, and also... I think that the K-9 is important.
Yeah, and speaking of cool, you'd be way more than cool than our current mayor, right?
Way to go, Matty. Good job. I love to put people on the spot. Let's see who I can get next. This next young man, I know your Papa, and I know where you live. Yeah, I know, that's scary. And you also have $25 in chamber bucks. I, I do want to say this again before I announce you, that everybody that did enter, you're a winner. You're a winner. We could only pick one, but just the fact that you entered in the contest, you put yourself out there, taking the risk that maybe you might not get picked, that says a lot about your character. Keep doing what you do. Excellent, excellent. But tonight, we do have a winner picked from Aldo Leopold. It says, whereas promoting good city government is important to the city of Burlington, to the citizens of Burlington, and whereas an essay contest entitled "If I Were Mayor" was open to the Burlington Seventh Grade Students to provide students the opportunity to reflect on the role of key elected official in our city, and whereas our future mayors are in classrooms today, the education they receive helps them to become good citizens and good mayors, and whereas essays were judged based on creativity, clarity, sincerity of thought, and proper use of grammar, a winner from each school is selected, and whereas the City of Burlington is a great place to live, work, and play, now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, do hereby proclaim Brock Dengler, winner of the City of Burlington Aldo Leopold Middle School Seventh Grade Essay Contest 2016, signed and sealed the 17th day of October 2016, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor. Would you come on down, Brock Dengler? Come on. You're a rock star, man. I mean, you're way cooler than your dad could ever be. Let's get that, let's get that off the table right now. He's already threatened me, said you better watch him for next election. Would you like to come this way? And have a word?
Everything's fine. I would like to thank my teacher, Mrs. Rose, for giving me the opportunity to fill out a essay, and that's pretty much it.
Well, I'll tell you what, actions speak louder than words. And you guys put your actions on the line. Again, Matty and Brock, just, just both of you, stand up real quick, just so everybody can home can see you two special kids. Fantastic. And I will be seeing you both at the fire station for, for dinner when they get that set up. Make sure you bring your bibs, it's going to be messy. All right, next, we also have a Community Planning Month.
Proclamation, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. Community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. The full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And, whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation made to qualify of our, of our settlements and environment. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Burlington. We recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional city planners of the City of Burlington and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. And whereas the 2016 American Planning Association Iowa Chapter Conference is being hosted in the City of Burlington, and the attendees are welcomed into our community, now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2016 to be designated as Community Planning Month. In the City of Burlington, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, signed and sealed the 17th day of October 2016, Shane A. McCambell, Mayors.
Eric, would you like to have a word, please?
Just want to thank the council for this proclamation. We're excited to welcome in and host planners and professionals from across the state and region here in our community, kind of show off what we've been doing here in the community, and also have some great sessions of learning what's going on across the state that we can maybe apply here in Burlington as well. I also want to just recognize our local steering committee that helped put a lot of this together, Zach James, Dan Gifford, Steve Freevert, Chelsea Toll, Charlie Nichols. So, we're excited to finally be at the point where we're hosting this conference, and it doesn't come around too often, so we're glad that it's here in Burlington this year and look forward to some good events and good people coming down to Burlington.
It starts when?
Starts on Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon through Friday afternoon, so...
So, the opening and greeting is at?
Opening greetings Thursday morning at eight at the Pizzazz Convention Center. A lot of sessions going on, some mobile tours, so you might see people out and about as well, so...
Okay, thank you, Eric.
At last count, there's around two, not quite 200 registered for the conference, so...
Good deal.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a, is the consent agenda. Yes, thank you. Would you like to take care of that, please?
Matty and Brock, if you want to leave with your family, otherwise, you can sit here and through the rest of the meeting with us if you like. It's up to you.
I don't think you guys want to do that. Brock was up pretty quick, man.
Brock, if you're running for election, you might want to stay.
He said he's going, hey, Rob, he said he's going to take my job next year. Thanks a lot, man. Awesome. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Matty, you're a rock star.
Matty, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All right. Next is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual, finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have three resolutions. The first resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution awarding contract for engineering services for Phase One, south of the Flint River Trail. The third resolution is authorizing a real estate purchase agreement, authorizing an agreement to annex property and granting permission for connection to the POTW sewer. We also have two public hearings set for November 7th, 2016. Now, the first is a consideration of a sale of property locally known as 117 South 7th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, and then the second is a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Greenway of Burlington Associates for encroachment into Valley Street right of way at 2312 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed? I see none. Counsel?
No, thanks.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Your Honor, I move to approve all items listed under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. All right. Moving right along, next we have, we've got a property for sale. This is going to make somebody a lovely, lovely property. This is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 207 South 5th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, publication's been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed. Mr. Tisland?
This is a vacant piece of land, property we acquired through the abandoned building program. The home was in a condition that did need to be demolished. We have, did send notice to neighbors, and the neighbor that owning the property surrounding it did have interest in acquiring it to expand their land. Hilltop Properties LLC. So, they did put a bid in of $500. We have not received any other interest in the property. As before, staff would recommend a vacant piece of land either go to a neighboring property or someone intending to develop it, and at this point, no one's come forward wishing to develop the property, so we would, staff would recommend selling to the adjacent neighbor.
This is, again, 207 South 5th Street. We have a bid already in place at $500, made by Hilltop Properties of Burlington. We're going to open up the bidding at this time. We have a bid of $500. If you have a higher bid, I'm going to, and you're not Hilltop, I'm going to ask that you come to the, to the podium and state your name, your address, and then your, your bid. I have a bid at 500. Do I have a bid at 1,000? I've got 500. Do I, do I have 1,000? Do I have 600? Going once? 500? Going twice? Lovely crowd tonight. Sold for $500 to Hilltop Properties of Burlington LLC, 18 South 6th Street.
Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve the sale of the property locally known as 207 South 5th Street, City of Burlington, with conditions.
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Okay. Sold to Hilltop Properties. Well done. Okay, next is a consideration of an ordinance creating Chapter 38 Tree Advisory Board of the Burlington Municipal Code.
This was brought forward through our Parks Department, looking at the resources we have available to us, working with some community groups. The tree resources in the community have kind of slowed over the last few years, so wanted to look at creating a board that could serve as an advisory resource for staff and officials in the community at large to provide information, education, recommendations, and support to promote practices which lead to a healthy urban forest. So, looking at doing that by creating a Tree Advisory Board, seven members, pointed to a stagger term, would be residents of the greater Burlington area, with non-resident memberships of the City of Burlington shall not exceed three members. Other duties would be ensuring we maintain our designation as Tree City USA and help staff in the city coordinate community tree planting and care activities, and also just educate the public on some of the tree issues that come up, including Emerald Ashbore and other tree issues that might come up in the future. It seems there's always disease or other issues that might affect trees, and we have limited resources through staff that can kind of get out and educate the public on some of these, and having some professionals and other advisory members on the board, we feel would help staff do that and better educate the public.
Okay. Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns regarding the Advisory Board for Trees? I see none. Counsel?
Here we have people willing to serve at this point.
Yeah, we've, our city forester and park superintendent have met with Trees Forever Group and some other professionals in the community, and we do have some interested in that, so...
Okay.
The Trees Forever Group was very excited about trying to help us get this off the ground and promote this as well.
Good, good deal.
You guys satisfied?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in seconded twice. Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
I move for adoption, preliminary adoption of the First Reading of an Ordinance Creating Chapter 38 Tree Advisory Board of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. So, if we have people out in, in this community that are, would be interested in serving, they should contact you?
Myself, or Ryan Gorley, Park Superintendent, or Patrick Moore, City Forester, any one of us.
Okay.
I have some ordinances for preliminary adoption of the Second Reading of an Ordinance, an ordinance rezoning the property located at 3107 South 14th Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R4 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District with conditions.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Tisland?
No changes from the previous reading. Again, this is a request by the property owner at 3107 to rezone to allow duplex condominium development on this lot, currently under the R1 zoning, it would only allow a single-family home. They're looking to construct up to two duplex units similar to what's at the end of Pawnee, just north off of 14th Street. Looking at surrounding land uses, there is a threeplex townhouse directly across the street to the east, and as well as apartments further down the road. The restriction, when conditions on the property limit the development to the same density as an R1 standard for lot size, so Planning Commission felt that this would be compatible with the surrounding land use with the conditions, and voted five to zero to recommend approval to the council.
Okay. Is there anybody from the audience that has any concerns or questions? I see none. Counsel?
I would like to motion to amend. To amend the motion for preliminary adoption, I'd like to get a second of that. No, just a second. Preliminary adoption of the Second Reading of an Ordinance, rezoning the property located at 3107 South 14th Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R4 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District with conditions to read as follows. For waiver of the preliminary consideration and adoption of the Second Reading, and for the final adoption of an ordinance rezoning the property located at 3107 South 14th Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R4 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District with conditions.
Second. Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Okay, that was on the amendment, and this is as amended.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Excellent.
I have an ordinance for the preliminary adoption of the Second Reading of an Ordinance, an ordinance rezoning the property located at 2910 Madison Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District with a planned unit development overlay zone.
Second. Thank you, sir. Mr. Tisland?
Again, no changes from the previous reading. This was a request by the property owner, developer, to rezone in order to better utilize the property. Currently, it's owned R1, which restricts the redevelopment of the property to single-family use or other medical uses and institutional uses with a special use permit. So, they requested rezoning, looking to redevelop the property with residential uses, commercial office and restaurant uses. So, those uses are all stated within the PUD as allowed uses. Those are all intermixed among our zoning classifications, whether it be C1 or C2 or R4, so felt the best way to, was to go through a PUD to state the actual uses allowed. For clarification, residential use categories includes group living, household living, including multifamily or apartment uses, as well as short-term lodging, which includes hotel and motels. Commercial office includes insurance, professional offices, general sales offices, engineers, lawyers, medical and dental clinics and offices, and then restaurant, would just include a restaurant. So, those would be the uses allowed. If they want to change something or add something in the future, it'd have to go through an amendment to the PUD ordinance, so there could be some review by Planning Commission and Council, but these are the specific uses requested by the owner and developer.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? Anyone? Okay, I see none. Counsel?
None for me.
Okay. Annie?
I would like to motion to amend. To amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the Second Reading of an Ordinance, rezoning the property located at 2910 Madison Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District with a planned unit development overlay zone to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the Second Reading, and for the final adoption of an ordinance rezoning the property located at 2910 Madison Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District with a planned unit development overlay zone.
Second.
Second.
Okay, let's, uh, vote on the amendment.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. And now, let us vote as amended.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Okay, it's been changed.
Right. Motion, ordinance for preliminary adoption of the Second Reading of an Ordinance, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 154 Residential Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Again, no changes from the previous reading. This primarily is going from the 2012 edition to the 2015 edition of the International Residential Code, which applies to one and two-family dwellings. The other minor change would be taking out the deletion of various chapters between 25 and 32 to allow this to be a self-contained code, which we hope is easier for development and review by our inspectors, as well as developers and builders in the community.
Anybody from the audience, questions or concerns? Lovely crowd tonight. Counsel?
Motion to amend for preliminary adoption of the Second Reading of an Ordinance, amending various sections of Chapter 154 Residential Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the Second Reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 154 Residential Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. All right. Let's vote now on the amendment.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. And now, as amended.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Okay.
An ordinance for preliminary adoption of the Second Reading of an Ordinance, an ordinance amending Section 150.07 affixing numbers of Chapter 150, building numbering of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. Second, thank you. Mr. Tisland?
This changes to bring our city code into a standard with our international fire code, as we work to improve the numbering throughout the community for house numbers. So, this would make the city code reflect the language within the international fire code, including where numbers shall be a minimum of four inches high, with a minimum stroke width of 0.5 inches, shall contrast with the background, and be of durable material. So, some minor changes. One note, current language does say three feet, or three inches high for the letters. Any letters currently on buildings would be allowed to stay. This change would go into effect for new numbering or when you're replacing your numbering, so...
Thank you. Anybody from the audience have any questions or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
Mayor, I think this is too important, just to kind of glance over. That's why we're going to go through three readings of this, as we discussed. The part of this ordinance reads that they must be, the numbers must be clearly visible and readable from the street and in plain view, and that's, that's very important to remember. We have some streets in town that the house numbers are not in numerical order. It doesn't go 1, 2, 3, 4, it may go 1, 3, 4, 2. The, the other thing to remember, this doesn't apply just to residential properties, it applies to commercial and industrial, too. Why this is important is because we have emergency responders, police and fire, that need to know where you're at, and the only thing they have to go on a lot of times is your address. You may know your address, but they're not going to know your home if that address isn't on the outside of it. So, please, they're not going to know your home or your business or your industry, so please get your, get your numbers up. The, the fire department will be doing some follow-up on this, and, and will be assisting people in, in learning about getting your, getting your numbers posted. And it's not just the emergency response, it's also people that work in businesses like UPS and FedEx and the postal service that need to know where your, where your address is. And I would double-check my address. There are some changes have taken place. I know Seneca Street, for one, it, Seneca Street used to be referred to as, was either Seneca Avenue or Seneca Road or something like that, and they changed it to Seneca Street. And it wasn't real significant for anybody other than the postal service, but there are streets like that from time to time that, for one reason or another, the name gets changed. Stay on top of that. I know the building that I'm, in my, my business is in, has 718 on it, but it's, the post office shows that address as being 720. And then, the building above me is 720 and a half, so I don't know why 718 is on my building, and I've been trying to, trying to find that out, and so far, no one's been able to answer it. And I just started working on that today. And then, the building across the street from me, the GPS has it as 713, and the waterworks department has it as 723, so I'm researching that one, too. Just in one block in the downtown, there's two addresses that are, that have errors on them, so. Or maybe more of that in town. You may want to look at your own properties and make sure they're addressed right. Because GP, the GPS and the, and the information that the emergency responders have is, if you say your house is 722 Summer Street, they're going to go to 722 Summer Street, and that, with all the best information they have, if, if it says 720 on the outside, or if their information shows it as, as being 720, they're going to go to the wrong house. Oh, the comments I have, I guess.
And if you want to get your pizza in under half an hour, it's really going to help.
I didn't think about pizza, good one, good one.
Throw that in.
That, that one will probably sell.
Or your pipes unplugged.
That's right, and those are important things. So anyways, just remember that, and we'll be, we'll do another reminder again before, before we get finished, so thank you for, for that. Anything else? Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
All right, I think we have some resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing staff to seek redevelopment proposals for the Apollo School property at 1201 Valley Street.
Second. Thank you.
As we moved through this process with the Apollo, council took action last summer to go through the 657A process to acquire this property, with the acknowledgement that backstopping, if the, there wasn't the ability to have development occur here, would be demolition using TIF financing to do. Fairly significant cost to do that, about $600,000 was kind of anticipated between the estimate for the demolition plus asbestos removal that's in there. As time has gone on, you've had different proposals for potentially looking at develop, redevelopment of that site, none of which the council has chosen to move forward with or the developer has made that decision themselves. But we've had no coordinated effort for seeking development on that. Prior, as the council then looked at moving forward on demolition, we did have a proposal from Zach James to think about the idea of going out for an RFP for development. Maybe you want to come forward and just kind of express what you've got here for a document of what you put together for how that process would work to seek proposals on this.
Sure. As Jim mentioned, we, we offered our services to assist the city, to market the property, to, I guess, make an outward marketing effort to developers in the Midwest, and with some assistance with Jesse Caston at Terrace Real Estate. And so, what we put together, and what we've talked about previously, is, together is a request for proposals that we would send out, and we talked about this a little bit last week, I'll just go over a few minor things. The intent would be to send this out next week via email and mail to a list of developers that we have, about 75 to 80, and also some engineering architecture firms, that's about 35, 40 companies there. They'd have till January to submit proposals to us, at which point, if we get proposals, we go through those, make sure they meet the criteria first, and then second, either review those with the, some kind of a review team with some city staff, maybe some counsel work directly to the council, and then give you guys an opportunity to look at those and maybe have them come present on what their proposal might be. And at that point, you have the opportunity to either move forward with a proposal, or as the language is in here, you have the ability to reject any or all proposals as well. So, that would kind of be the, the process, and I guess if you have any questions about that, or if you have anything else to add.
A couple of things. One, the, the RFP does have in it a purchase price, defined purchase price at $100,000 as a base, and it also expresses the intent of the council to be willing to offer a 15-year TIF rebate as an incentive within it. Would you accept offers from someone who isn't on the list that you have put together?
Yeah, I mean, the intent, that is just our list that we have to mail it to, but there could be other people that came forward.
So, someone, someone has a proposal, they are more than encouraged to talk to either yourself or to Jesse Caston?
That is correct.
Do we have a time limit on this?
Well, we would send it out on October, so we'd send it out next week, and, next week, and then proposals would be due January 20th. And then, we haven't set a timeline after that, but I would like to probably move within a month to make a decision on something, one way or the other. Like I said, we haven't set that timeline, but I would think we could move somewhat quickly.
The timeline on the back end has been left kind of open, dependent on what we get for responses to the RFP.
And we, we did talk about maybe having a little extra time in case, maybe they, they send in the information we request, but maybe we have some follow-up questions or information, so we might give them a little time to, to get back to us on those things.
As a sidelight, this is just a detail, but I was in Sioux Falls, South Dakota this week, visiting with my mother-in-law, and there's a lady there that's originally from Burlington. And she came up to me and said, "Bob Fleming, don't you dare tear down the Apollo building." And anyway, I threw a cup of coffee at her, and I'm up. No, I really didn't.
Now, we've, and just in the meantime here, too, we've, I've received emails and phone calls from a couple people that are from the area originally, but don't live here, who have interest in it, and then we've heard from a few developers as well in the meantime, before we sent it out, so. So, there's interest. We'll see, see what kind of proposals we would get, though.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, good luck.
Work your magic, Zach. I believe in you. No pressure. I believe in you, though. But no pressure.
No pressure. I don't feel any pressure.
No comment, I was waiting for you to say something, all right.
Any other questions for me?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. You guys good?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Wait, wait, wait. Have we asked for comments from the audience?
I thought I did. I'll ask again. Was there anybody from the audience that had any questions or concerns? Maybe I didn't. Okay. Okay. Counsel, we're ready to vote?
I'm going to stick with my original position. My original position was Miller Valentine can't get it together, then we're going to demolish the building, so that's where I'm standing.
Is that where you're standing?
That's where I'm standing.
That changes things. Well, let's, let's vote to see where, see where the cards fall.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
No.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
All right. Aye.
Okay. I said it, we'll be moving forward on that. Zach, do what you can, my friend. Number two.
Your Honor, a resolution approving contract for real estate services with Terrace Real Estate Group, LLC.
Second.
This is a proposal from Terrace to market the property that we just went out, or talking about going out with the RFP on. Jesse Caston has been involved with Terrace Realty, has been involved on several projects with us. What you see in here is a look to represent us comparable to how he marketed this property in partnership with us, for, how, how he marketed this property in, on, doggone it. I just lost what I was going for. It's the last property that we sold, which was...
The Manor.
The Manor Site. Can't believe I just did that. But anyway, what you see in here is a fee, five, a 5% fee, if he's able to get it sold, that would be based off of, in this proposal, if you were to get things done at the proposed purchase price, $100,000 would be a $5,000 fee for the work he puts in, if he is actually able to successfully get it sold. Just would recommend moving forward and using their services.
Sounds good. Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? Okay, I see none. Counsel?
None here.
Got no problem either. Let's take it to vote, Kathleen.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Very well.
Your Honor, a resolution establishing a no parking zone on the west side of Willow Street extending from Dale Street to Sequoia Drive.
Second.
Mr. McGregor?
Good evening.
Nick McGregor, Public Works. We've received a request from Officer Larger, from, on behalf of Burlington Public Schools, to install a no parking zone on the west side of Sequoia, pardon me, Willow Avenue, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM during school days. There is currently no parking on the east side of Willow Avenue. Based on Public Works's analysis of it, don't think it would be an issue. They're the sole occupant in the area to be affected by it, so. Officer Larger is in the audience, so she should be able to answer any questions. I personally drove in that area during school, and it is quite congestion, quite congested right now.
Officer, you want to, you want to come up here for a second?
I just wanted to make you walk up to the podium. No, but do you, is there anything that you can, that you want to add to this, just for...
It's mainly the issue, the street's not wide enough, and people still park on the east side of the street, even though that's no parking as well. They'll drop their kids off on that side of the street, have them walk across, and as people are trying to get around, all these cars that are now stopped, including the buses, it's just a safety hazard, and we're afraid that we're going to watch one of these kids get hit.
Are you the school resource officer there?
In the middle schools right now, yes.
Yeah, how do you like that?
I'm enjoying it a great amount.
Good for you. Good for you. Thank you for doing that.
Look me in the eyes, I want you to say that one more time.
I'm really enjoying it.
All right, all right.
All right, any other questions?
There's adequate parking in the parking lot, right, for parents?
There is, and right now, they do not make use of it. So, that's, the hope is that they will be encouraged to park in the parking lot on any given day. It's maybe a quarter full, as they all line up on the street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down.
Any questions or concerns, anybody from the audience? Okay, counsel?
I think it's a good move.
I think so, too. All right, let's take it to vote, Kathleen.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Your Honor, a resolution approving final plot of the second addition of Westbrook Meadows Subdivision.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Teslin?
This is the second phase of development by Mr. Pearson off of the Gear Avenue with townhouse and condo development. This includes zero lot line development, so the final plot followed along the centerline of the, the building lines between adjacent properties. So, you see lot sizes that reflect what was approved through the rezoning of this property to allow the zero lot line development. As it continues to develop, there may be additional lot splits, but this reflects the existing buildings on the site. Is working with, or, we are working with Public Works and their engineers on acceptance of infrastructure, but at this time, this is just the final plot approval of this.
Must be a nice project. Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns on this project? I see none. Counsel?
I just want to thank Mr. Pearson, developer, and all who are involved in this project. It's great.
I want to thank you with them. Thank you, Mr. Pearson, for all the development you've done. Keep it up. All right. Anybody else satisfied?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Well done. Number five.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving purchase of a 2017 backdoor 2100-plus, I don't even know what it is, with hydro excavating capabilities, for the Public Works Street Division. Please educate me.
Second.
Is that how the resolution reads?
Something like that.
Eric will be throwing up a slideshow here.
We have a slideshow from the computer to...
Just a, just a kind of an idea, I'm going to start out with what a combination truck is. So, it's got the ability to use a vac, a vacuum to pull things from the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, or, and then it's also got the ability to jet. So, currently, we have a vacuum truck, so it, it essentially throws two things into one, and then it also has hydro excavation abilities. I think that that is one of the features that we're really looking forward to, with all the fiber work that goes into ground and all the gas lines and all the things that are underground now. It'll be nice to have the opportunity to use hydro excavation in areas that are tight with utility work. So, there's some other pictures. I don't know if it's, if you want me to go through the full slideshow, it's kind of overkill on, on what all those things do. I, I don't quite know what they all do, but in the end, my staff put all the specs together, and in front of you, there are two bids. One of them probably should have been removed from the list, because it didn't meet the specifications that we sent out, so that's why you see us going for the higher dollar unit, because it's a fan unit versus a PD unit. And there's actually, here's an example of what a, a fan unit is. On top, they have multiple units where fans generate the suction power. It allows you, a fan unit over a PD unit allows you to pull things from a higher depth, or, yes, higher depth. And so, we have some sewers in certain parts of town that are 18-foot down or more, and so you kind of need that extra. Yeah, a PD will get down their ways, but a, a fan unit will, will go above and beyond that, so.
How much?
How, how deep?
How much?
How much dollar money?
$3.89.
$3.89.
$3.89.
You know, I just want to say, can you make sure you send another message to staff and tell them that, that it's appreciated, that the time that they put in to go through to make sure that this was the equipment that they wanted, and that, that was going to work. And I'm also, I was also glad to hear, you know, everybody thinks that, everybody just wants new equipment, but they weren't all that jazzed at first, you know, about getting this...
No, the, the buy-in that I saw from staff from the beginning, when I interviewed till, to now, has, has greatly changed, and I know that they see the, what they can do with this type of a unit, the, the efficiency that they'll get in, in being able to vacuum and jet at the same time, and use that in combination with our other unit will really help in sewer situations.
I want to amend what the mayor said.
Budget-wise, this was budgeted for a fourth to be paid for out of road use tax and three-fourths out of sewer, recognizing that it has benefits for both departments, primarily on the sewer side, but it, but it benefits both, and we, this was part of the budget. We budgeted it, maybe you just said 390,000.
I believe it was 400,000 in the CIP, but...
You had 390 in the memo, but...
Yeah.
But we have the funds set aside to make it happen.
Very good. Very well. Is there anybody from the audience has any questions or concerns? I see none. Not even Ms. Vaughn? All right, just checking. Counsel? Okay. Kathleen, let's vote on it.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
All right, we've got a new piece of equipment.
Your Honor, I have a resolution amending reserve parking along Valley Street to the east of Main Street.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Mr. Teslin?
I amend the previous resolution to provide that three spaces that are on-street parking would be placed on the north side of Valley Street instead of having all 13 spaces on the south side of Valley Street. I'm trying to get my bearings, that's correct, I left my map down there, but the city's required to provide 18 spaces for US Bank use. Five spaces are provided in the parking lot directly south of US Bank, and 13 spaces are provided on-street at this point until they vacate the bank. Upon installation of the spaces, it went further to the east than anticipated just based on spacing and distance from the corner and had some concern from one of the businesses there, so this resolution allows for the, three of the spaces to be moved to the north side of Valley Street in front of the vacant building owned by the Frank Millard Company as well, to open up some additional spaces in front of the businesses there on Valley Street.
Tim, does this address the concerns we have with Bob Proll?
For the most part, yeah.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns on this parking? On the parking? Yes, sir? Okay. Counsel?
Seems like a good compromise.
Amen to that. Well done, well done. All right, Kathleen, let's go ahead and vote on it.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Okay. Number seven.
Your Honor, I have a resolution providing for a salary adjustment for the city manager.
Second. Okay. Who's, where's Steph? Yeah, Steph, would you come? I guess I could have had you come in. Do you have anything you want to say before we...
Well, I prepared the resolution based on what you guys had wanted me, which included the 9% increase to increase his salary to 150,000. His current salary is 137,592.
Okay. I'll just, great, I think that's fantastic. I was the one that, that came up with the 150,000, the 9%, so I guess I'll just go ahead and start. I have not changed what I said last week or two weeks ago. I think we started him off at a meager wage, which, again, I'm not saying that he deserves an extra cookie for that. He agreed to that, but when we started him, it was within understanding that he was going to do some good things for our community and get us in a position where we could afford to start taking care of our roads and all the things that had been neglected, and also to get our finances in order, which everybody knows what type of state we were at the beginning. Some people will say, "Well, what about the other, what about the other raises that other people got? The other employees got 2.5%." I say the other employees that got 2.5%, every decision they make doesn't affect the bottom line. If they're, if they fall short or if they take a week off, maybe, you know, some blades of grass didn't get cut right or something to that effect, but every decision that he makes, everything that he does, it affects, it affects our money. So I think that changes how we analyze this position. I also want to say this, and I'll pass it up, I also want to say that people, other communities, watch and they listen in to see what we do. I believe that we've got the best city manager in his bracket, per se, if you want to say that, in his group, but I believe we do. I believe that the other communities know that we've got the best city manager. With that being said, I think we need to pay him as such. It's, I've heard people saying, "I've got different messages. Well, you know, you shouldn't give him that much." I don't get that kind of raise. Well, I understand that, but you're not the city manager of Burlington. You know, if that was, if that was the case, then it would be different, because then you're dealing and taking care of the budget. That changes things. He's not giving me any money. That doesn't change the fact that he earned the money. I stand on it. I feel like you earned it, I feel like we need to send a message to anybody for future reference for this, so that if somebody comes here looking for the job, or if somebody starts here from that position, that they're not going to start at the top, but if they can do everything that they said that they can do, if they're competent and they are able and they get us where we need to be, that will reward them for their merit for what they've done. So, I said all that to say this, I'm still at 150, I have no problem sleeping at night, and it's not going to affect our budget to take care of our city manager. That's where I'm at.
Can I go next?
Yes, sir.
How about the audience?
Hold the audience.
I was just going to bypass, I was just going straight for the floor. All right.
I'd like to hear from them first.
Mr. Spurk, absolutely. Is there anybody from the audience that has any comments on the pay? Just strictly on the pay.
Brady Starling, by 17 South 7th Street, Burlington, Iowa. And I hope I'm, plain is spoken, and I hope I'm understood, I hope there be no misunderstanding, nothing against anyone, but there are wounds that need to be, you know, healed, and maybe I'll make this comment later on. But concerning the increase, I'm all in favor of an increase. The one that the mayor is speaking of, I think have done a magnificent job. I think he's very worthy of what the city has agreed to give him, and even the increase, I'm all in favor. I do say this, I just wouldn't want to see my tax increase, though. I do want to say that. I'm kind of concerned with the ones that may be on the bottom of the totem pole, so to speak. We could kind of balance things out a little bit more. I wouldn't want to see the top overflowing where it's overflowing, and the others, you know, maybe suffering a little bit. Maybe if we could balance it out a little, but like I say, I have nothing against what has been mentioned to increase the salary for our city manager. Like I said, I think you've done a great job, and I'm grateful for him, and appreciate him, I respect him, and I thank the Lord for the job that he is doing. And I think that's about all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for coming down. Anybody else from the audience that has any comments on the salary? On, just on number seven? Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize for missing the last few meetings, but I wasn't able to be here. I'm very supportive of a substantial raise for Jim. First of all, I think there are a few years where he was underpaid, very frankly. And secondly, I know we made some comparisons with other cities of like size are paying, but those numbers that I've seen are going to go up in July when these people do their new budgets. So when you make these comparisons, let's be sure we're comparing apples to apples. And it just seems to me, I'm not hung up on a particular number, whether it's 8% or 9%, it should be substantial. It was just a year or two ago, we were at a meeting in Cedar Rapids, where the Cedar Rapids, or pardon me, the State of Iowa City Manager Association named Jim Furno the number-one city manager in the state of Iowa. And that has stuck with me. So, we've got somebody that's exceeding, I think, our expectations, and they ought to be paid accordingly. So, I'm not going to, I'm not hung up on 8%, 9%, but something in that range, to me, certainly is the right way to go.
Mayor Proton?
I'm going to move to amend item one to strike the 9% and to change the 150, 150,000 to 145,000. And if someone will second, then I can speak to that. We have a second. People I talk to, and the word I hear from most people from the community is, they want to reward our city manager, and I agree, we should be rewarding our city manager, he's terrific. He's doing a great job. I just think 9% is just a little over at the top for what we should be saying we're ready to do based on our budget constraints and what other people in the community are experiencing. So, that's why I'm suggesting 145, but that's still a healthy increase from the 137,592.
Before I pass it down, I do just want to say, as we move forward, just remember the difference here that we're talking from what is proposed is $5,000. And I know people get to talking about budget, they say every penny counts, but this isn't going to affect anybody in their wallet. And to me, the $5,000 is well spent if we're going to, if we're going to do something, we need to take care of somebody that has done so much and got us turned around, so, and earned the money. All right. Tim Scott?
Help me out here, you were here when Jim first come on board. He was hired at a lower rate than the outgoing city manager, correct?
Yes.
And in his first year, he declined a raise?
No, six months after he came, he received a pay increase. That was the deal we had worked out with him.
Yeah.
It was a year after.
Year after, he declined, okay. And as I remember, and again, I wasn't on the council that declined that raise because our financial position just wasn't such that we could afford that at that time. And I've got to admire that position from the city manager, from Jim. And I agree with what everybody's saying, he's doing an outstanding job. I floated the idea of $160,000, and I really wanted to find out what people's opinions were, and without exception, all I heard from people was, "He was well worth it, but we couldn't afford it." And they spoke to, I guess, my conservative side, and I am somewhat conservative. And I, there was, I mean, I couldn't find justification for the 160, 160,000. And I appreciate all of my cohorts up here and everything that they've had to say, and I too would like to offer an amendment, and that is to compromise with what has been put on the table, the 145 and the 150, and ask that the 9% be stricken and that the new annual salary be 147,500.
Kathleen, we have to do first amendment before we can do the second one, correct?
Have to vote on the first one first, all right?
Let's, counsel.
So, yeah, I mean, I agree with everything as far as he's done an excellent job. You know, I'm new to the, getting into all the city details, but I know he's done a good job, and I've heard a lot of people say the same thing, either they know he's done a good job or they don't have any idea what he does, so.
Were you talking to my staff?
You can't.
But yeah, the dollar amount, it just, you know, I'm not saying he doesn't deserve a raise, and I'm not saying that he wouldn't deserve a raise next year or the year after that, and I think that's kind of where it comes down to as well, is just because we give him a lower raise this year doesn't mean we can't give him a raise next year. Because what if we give him a raise, a 9% raise this year, and then next year, if we want to give him a raise, you know, it just, it can escalate. And I think he should be rewarded, but I think we can also reward him every year, you know, if he's doing a great job. So, the 145 is my max, and it's not because of the quality of work, it's just because we've made a lot of cuts and other departments have suffered. And until we get everyone back up to full steam, I think we should be very modest in what we do. And that's it, thank you.
Well said.
I would only mention once again that this past year, this year, we did adjust the employee manual, and we did increase all of the grade levels, pay grades and amounts, in some cases that would raise people's salary more than the 2.5, 2.5% would be more like 4% to 5% in some cases, so. That type of thing doesn't happen for a city manager. This city manager's pay is based much differently than what the rest of the staff and employees are.
I guess the other factor is, what's the community standard? How is everybody else in the community, how's their pay increasing or not increasing and so forth?
I just got to throw in there again, I think it's our job, we were elected, and it's our job to look after the community and the decisions that we make, and sometimes when I look after the community, I'm not, I'm not quite doing exactly what they would think that I should do on this. I still feel like we're missing out on a great opportunity for down the road, for future pay in this position. I really do, I'm not going to, I'm not going to kick and scream on you guys, but I still think, for the amount of money, I just got to say this again, you guys want to come along with me and get on my train. It's for $5,000 difference, we've got a guy here, you know, and he stayed the five that he said he was going to stay, and he's still here. I'm not talking about buying his love or buying his attention, I'm just saying, taking care of the person that's taking care of us. We know what he's capable of, we know what he's done, we know what he's going to continue to do. You know, I'm not worried about next year, I don't know what's going to happen come next year. I don't like to, I don't like to plan like that because a lot of things change in a year. I'm talking about right now, I'm talking about right now. We've got this man sitting right here, and we can bless him tonight, and we can send a message, and the Hawk Eye can write it up, that of his peers, we're paying him the best. Why? Because we've got the best city manager. Again, for those that are watching, don't think that me and him are playing golf, we don't. I don't eat lunch with Jim. That's not what this is about. This is about taking care of who's doing their job. The man's doing his job. The man is doing his job. I'm still at the 150, who's coming with me?
I don't disagree with that at all. Matter of fact, I agree with it, but...
It's not going to change the taxes, it's $5,000 difference.
I'm at 145.
Should we have an amendment to the...
Yep.
Okay, the amendment is to delete the 9% and it'd be 145,000, that's what we're voting on right now.
All right.
To amend.
What?
Does it have to have enough percent in there?
You can just delete it, just delete the percentage.
That's the amendment, to delete the percent.
And then we'll go back with the, okay.
145.
Okay, so this is to delete the 9, okay.
Now wait a minute, say it again.
This motion is to delete the 9%, and it will be, it won't say a percentage, but it'll be 145,000.
Okay, good, thank you.
That's what we're voting on right now. So an aye vote would be, you want the 145,000.
Yes, sir.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
No.
McCambell?
No.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to strike the 9% and make the new annual salary 147,500.
You have a second?
Second.
I give you a second, Mr. Fleming.
So an aye...
147,500.
Right, so an aye vote would be for the 147,500.
Do you have any argument you want to make there, Mr. Scott, or just as a compromise?
It's a compromise.
Ready?
Yes, let's vote on 147,500.
Okay. Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
No.
Davidson?
Only because if I vote no, then we have an issue, so I'm going to say yes, aye, so we can move on.
Well done.
Fleming?
I'm saying an enthusiastic yes.
McCambell?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
No, I just want to clarify what I did there. My 145 wasn't going to go, so I don't want to go to 150 or 160, so 147,500, it's a compromise for...
Okay.
Now we need to vote on the original resolution as amended.
As amended, thank you.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay.
Stephanie, thank you for your work.
Well done, Steph. At this time, we will take comments from the audience. I'm going to, again, just be mindful of the clock, but if you have comments that we have not addressed tonight, is there one tonight, anybody? Yes, sir?
...by 17 South 7th Street, Burlington, Iowa. And I just feel like there are some issues, some situations that I feel need to be cleared up, and I made a phone call to one of the city councilmen's, and they got back with me. I don't know whether they... The meeting that I had hoped would take place would be between myself and one councilman or the entire city council. I would prefer, if it did happen, with the entire city council. And the councilman did get back with me. And the councilman did get back with me, but the date was a conflict with the Juneteenth. And I said, could we see about getting another date? So that's where I am, I had not heard back from the city councilman on that.
Freddie, I called and left a message and never got a call back. I wasn't sure if the, I wasn't sure if it was, if the issues had been addressed or not when I hadn't heard back from you.
No, I, I never received it. I waited and waited and waited, and I never received it.
I can meet with you tomorrow.
Well, I like to meet with, with everyone that this concerns. Couple of the council members are not on the council now, so that I could get this cleared up, so I could move on. Because it seemed like, when I come down here, it seemed like there's always a conflict or something. Things are said, addressed to me, and some don't know anything about it. And, you know, it just, it makes them feel feelings. I like to be straightforward. If I have anything to say, I'll say it to your face, I'm not going to say it behind your back.
What's the, what's the, what's, what's the issue that needed to be addressed? I thought.
Well, I, I don't think we should discuss it like this, I think we should be elsewhere, that's, that's my opinion.
Well, you understand, we can't meet with you as a council individually.
Well, you can meet with me one-on-one.
We'd have an illegal meeting if we all met together with you at one time.
How was that?
If we all sat down with you, we'd have an illegal meeting.
Only two council members at a time, otherwise that's an illegal meeting.
Well, two would be all right, two at a time, it doesn't matter to me.
That's fine.
But we, we also can't have two go and leave and then two more come back and talk about the same thing? That, and, and is, that's correct?
If you go and, you're certainly welcome to go and look at a situation. You can't have a discussion about anything, and you can't express your opinion about things and allow someone to collect several people's opinions. That's where you start to run into problems.
Is this, is this something that we're talking about?
And even there, it gets nebulous, but it's, the, the thing you have to be concerned with is about expressing how you would react to a given item that's being discussed. And if you start to tell someone what you think needs to be done with something, and they start pulling everybody else, and you get into problems. So you're welcome to meet and have each of you go and spend time, let them show you something, but you can't be, you need to be careful then that none of you discuss what you're talking about. And for them to deliberate any issue and get you anything, it has to be them acting as a whole. And part of that, the council has, no one on council has any authority as an individual. The authority of a council is when you act as a body. And so, I mean, you can bring a request and let someone know, if they think it's worth the, the whole council discussing, they can ask that it be brought forward to the council to deal with. If they think it's something that we can try to work on without council, if it's something staff-wise that can be done, they can bring it to staff and try to get something worked out. So that would make sense if you wanted to meet with one or two council members. But it gets really problematic for them to all go, even on an individual basis, if you're trying to get their opinions on something.
But if you can meet with Tim, if you can meet with Tim and at least, if you can meet with Tim tomorrow, if you can meet with Tim to at least get it started and get the information to Tim so that we can, so that we can know how to move forward? Because I'm not, I'm not even sure.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not, I don't, I don't need your opinion, I just want to share some things. And you don't have to say anything if you don't desire to, that's all I'm saying.
Sorry.
Make myself, make myself known and make myself clear. You know, I, because there are some decisions that have been made down here in, well, but anyway, it seems though that others get the ear and others don't get the ear. You don't hear what anyone else is saying. And I'd rather get it, I'd rather get, get this and get it straight once and all, so that I can move on. Because we had a, we had an issue down here the last time, that I was accused of a, what, accusing the council or something? And I was just going by what I was told, you know? And it didn't make me look like I'm up here telling lies on somebody. You know, I'm just saying, these things don't seem to happen with anyone else, but it happened with me. I'm just, and I just want to get a, a situation that has been said to my group, or not said to other groups. It seems as though it's a, it's, it's a favoritism. So go along that line, I don't go any further.
Well, okay, okay.
Yeah, I go along that line. And you, if you go back and look at decisions that have been made down here that I was a part of, I left here empty-handed.
There's been no favoritism, there's been no favoritism.
All right, okay.
But if you, if you can get with Tim Scott and let him know what the deal is, so that we can, so we can know where to move forward on it, that'd be, that'd be good to go.
Yep, Tim, you're willing to meet with him, right? Let's do that.
Mr. Gannakis.
I was here a couple of months ago on the same situation. Today, I went to Aldi's grocery store to get some pop. Now, I'm the only one in the store, and my car's the only one in the lot. When I came out, there was a silver utility vehicle from Lee County watching me. So what I did, I went around him and took a picture of him and everything. When I left, he left. Just like we pledge allegiance to the flag, I put my uniform on. My MOS was eleven delta ten, that's recon specialist. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here talking to you, I'm good at it. But I shouldn't have to go through all this.
Did you, did you give your name and address?
I never did do drugs, the chief has accused me of all of this.
Did you give your name and address, Paul?
Paul Gannakis, ten thirteen North Eighth, Burlington, Iowa, five two six oh one. Now, there's so many different vehicles, LaWise County, Lee County, Henry County, Des Moines County. Just for instance, I was out in Crapple Park. Every time I go to Crapple Park, they seem to show up. And when I go to the port, they seem to show up. Well, there was a black utility from Fort Madison with a Lee County plate, I couldn't see through the glass. So what I did, he was watching me, I went out of, out of his sight and got in my trunk with my high-power binoculars, and I see movement in the, the vehicle. So what do I do? I put the binoculars back in, I pull up alongside of it, and I look toward the front to see them in there, and they took off real quick. They went over by the swimming pool, and I went over there again, I wrote down the Latin plate. I shouldn't have to go through all this, I've served my country in good faith and goodwill. There's no drugs on my record. And I'm being followed constantly, this is abusive surveillance on me. I'm not liking it, I suffer post-traumatic stress disorder, and this is just making it explosive. I have the right to be left alone. Just like the chief said, that he would ease off and everything, he's not easing off, they're coming on me like flies now. When I picket, eleven thirty, I go home, they follow me. I come back, four thirty, when I go home, they follow me. To test them on this, to make sure they follow me, I'll go up to the park, here we go, same vehicles. I shouldn't have to go through this. I'm sick of it, I'm sick and tired, and I've been picketing since August second, and I will go further. I'll go to winter, whatever, I'm, I'm not appreciating.
Mr. Gannakis, I really do, man, I really want, I really would love to see, try to get some type of resolve, you know, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want you to continue to picket, and I, you know, and I don't mean.
More than, I don't like to be lied to by the chief, I called him a liar to his face. I had a two-hour session with him.
I think that's a mistake, you shouldn't be doing that.
Well, if he's lying to my face?
You shouldn't be doing that.
When he says there's no cars following me, when I got pictures, no.
You shouldn't be doing that.
No, well, I don't care, that's why he's got a bandito against me.
I, I don't think you're right there. But I'm not going to argue this. You are probably.
You're not going through what I'm going through, Mr. Davidson?
You're right.
So you don't know nothing about it.
Well, I know something about it.
I do too.
Yeah.
I know about the.
Mr. Gannakis, I don't, I, again, I, I just don't, it just doesn't make sense to me because I just don't understand. We don't have the money for, to have somebody tailing you, and I just don't understa, I don't understand how, how it could be continuously going on.
I got a.
But, but I want to show you the respect that you deserve, because I, you are, you did serve your country, and that, that means something, it does. But I just don't understand. I, I mean, I just don't understand how we, how, how we could be continually doing it, because we don't have the manpower.
Well, he's doing it, I got pictures. When I'm at home, they come down up and down my alley, and they go up and down my street, the same car. This is getting ridiculous. And when I'm home, they get all mad, they come up by my house, trying to draw me out, to come out and play with them. I don't. When they don't see me, they go to my house. I caught them at all their games, I caught every one of their fast horse cars, snitch cars, whatever, I, I caught them all. I even brought three of them to the police station, I said, stay here. When I went to get the police, they took off. Now, why they follow me?
I, I don't know, but I, I, I think.
I'm not seeing things, I can put myself back to Vietnam mode, how, how I searched the Vietnam, like recon. I shouldn't have to do that. They're obvious, they park right next to me, when I go to the sun and tanning, they park right next to me.
Mr. Gannakis, I think we need, well, the chief isn't here tonight, and there's nothing, and there's nothing that we're going to be able to get resolved. But I think, I think maybe it'd be good to see if maybe you and the chief and, and somebody else, I'd be glad to sit down and, and to have a talk on, on private time.
I talked to them for two hours and didn't do no good. And I'm not seeing things, I got the pictures of these cars and everything.
I have to, I need to see some of those pictures, I'll have, I'll have to, and I, I can't do this all night. But I'll, I'll have to, I'll have to see some of those pictures, Paul.
I'm not exaggerating, I see these cars.
I'm not, I'm not saying you're.
I'm not going to give my techniques away, because there's two police officers in the back of this city hall. I got some techniques that work real good, because I used them in Vietnam, and they're working here.
I'll, I'll be down here tomorrow, if you want to come down and see me, Paul. I'll be down here tomorrow.
Well, I guess I can come down tomorrow.
Come on down tomorrow before noon, I'll be down here in the morning before, I'll be leaving around noon, so come on down and see me.
At what time?
I have a meeting at seven thirty, if somebody get out of there, I'll be coming right over here anytime.
You mean tomorrow night, you're saying?
No, tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
At what time?
About, any, between nine and, nine and eleven.
Okay, and your office is?
You know where, you know where I'm at, second floor, yeah, just come on down, come on down and see me, bring those pictures with you, and I'll see if I can get the chief to stop by too or something, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Is there anybody else that has, Mr. French?
I've spoken to most of you personally about my issue. Congress, Councilwoman Wilson, I've not spoken with. I have a chronic health issue. Two years ago, I would not have said that, in fact, I didn't even say it to my closest relatives. I have had this problem for twenty, twenty-five years. It was never a problem for me, I just managed to negotiate my way through life, avoiding the smoke because of my health problems. But September of 2014, the council passed fire pit ordinance with not much more reasoning than the people seem to want it. I have given all of you packets of information, either in a mailbox or personally, that outline some of the health issues related to the smoke, and I know I'm fighting against a cultural icon. People love to sit around their fires, and so shall I. But because of my problems, smoke is a major irritant to me. If you look at the first page of what I just handed you, you'll see a letter from my doctor, the fire chief received this letter in June. You'll also see a graphic that represents the major, major health issue I have, my lack of salivary function. My, my figure is down in the lower right of that graphic. That represents, what I, when I, there are two ways to measure salivary function, one is when you eat and drink, I do okay with that. But the other portion of it, I come in at fourteen percent of where the bottom of normal is. I would have to multiply my saliva output by more than seven times to get to the bottom of normal. The reason this is a problem is that saliva is crucial in, in the nasal passages and the throat for trapping, protecting you from particulate pollution. So when I get a little, even a little bit of smoke, it's a major irritant to me. What, after you passed the ordinance, it was a problem that fall, over the winter, I had my normal amount of smoke for one neighbor that burned, and it was only, over the years, it's only been a problem a few days over the winter. But then when spring arrived and the burning got thicker, you can see in your papers I gave you, the darkened days from the six warm months of last year, you can see the number of days that I have received irritating amounts of smoke. And I know it's hard to measure this stuff, but I can tell you that two days this summer and five days last summer, the public health officials were in, on the airwaves, saying, those of you that are sensitive to particulate pollution should watch out because, limit your activities because there's smoke in the air from wildfires in Canada that was affecting Burlington, Iowa. Those were clean air days for me compared to what I get from this fire pits. Spring of last year, the end of the first week of June last year, I had two unexpected symptoms show up. My mouth and gums, the inside of my lips and gums swelled up. I shouldn't have, should have not expected that, that's my secondary salivary glands, which pop into action, since my main, main ones don't work. So I had ongoing swelling in the mouth, and I also developed a spike in tinnitus. Now, I've gotten used to the swelling in the mouth, the tinnitus has progressively gotten louder and louder and louder, to the point that last month, at the Pipe Organ Concerts in downtown Burlington, they build as the Pipe Organ crawl, above all the Pipe Organ music, I still hear my ears ringing, singing with the Bel Canto Corral, practicing with a crowded choir room full of singers, I still hear the ringing above all the singing. It's got progressively worse, and it seems to take less and less smoke to trigger a spike in my symptoms. I don't know where to go from here. I know you have a provision in the burning ordinance that allows me to call for relief. It took nearly ten months just to get to that point, where the fire department would believe it was a problem for the caller, not just for the responding firefighter, who is a professional smoke eater. But that provision doesn't seem to be solving my problem. I can't predict the direction of the winds, when the fire's going to start up. I don't know where to go from here, other than ask you for some type of relief. The ringing in my head is twenty-four seven, and it's becoming debilitating. The swelling in the mouth I can deal with. But it's just getting worse and worse with less and less trigger.
Mark, here's the, here's the, the issue, again, we talked about this, is where do you find that happy medium? I mean, you can't, you know, God controls the wind, you know what I'm saying? I mean, at one minute it could be going good, and then the next minute it could be, you know, going straight toward your house.
And how many times? do I need to call out the fire department before I get a more permanent solution? They've already come out about twenty times. And if, if I would have called every time that the smoke wasn't irritant to me, I would have reached that twenty times probably early last year. You can count the number of darkened days on that calendar. And that's not even all the days that I smelled smoke, those are only the days that it was a level that was a problem for me. There are plenty of other days not marked where there was smoke, but I could deal with it.
I.
And I know most people don't have this problem and I am an aberration and I, I just need to figure out if Burlington can accommodate my presence or whether I need to pack my bags and hit the road. It's probably the same question you would have if a child had a peanut allergy, does a school have a place for that kid? Are you gonna make some kind of accommodation?
Yeah, it's just that with a peanut allergy, it's real easy to keep people away from peanuts.
I don't wish to be, I don't wish to be in my own shoes, I didn't choose this. I wish I were had a different physiology that I could deal with it, but I don't, that's just where I am.
I'd like to bring it back up and take a look at it, guys.
Yeah, I think it's worth seeing what options we can sift through.
Did any of you read the materials that I submitted to you in the thicker packet that talked about the health implications of smoke? If you get beyond the romantic notion of a fire and look at the, what the scientists have to say about it, what the EPA has to say about it, what the Harvard School of Public, the Dr. Joel Schwartz from the Harvard School of Public Health talks about the various chemicals present like arsenic, mercury, lead, formaldehyde. He says these are some of the most insidious chemicals known to man.
And you, you can throw that out at campers and they're gonna keep, they're gonna keep burning logs just like the smokers know where their cigarettes.
I have lit more than my share of campfires in my past, but it was always out in the woods, away from people's dwellings. And I always had the option and always exercised the option to constantly move to stay upwind. In my own home, I don't have the option to, to move upwind. Actually, I do have the option and I ended up driving around town aimlessly because the fire department either wouldn't put out the fire before last June twenty-ninth or else they couldn't find it. And it continued to burn. And that's a problem, they, they can't always find it and it's a burden for them trying to find it. And the smoke can travel long distances, it doesn't have to be the next door neighbor.
Mark, the, the best we'll be able to do tonight is, uh, if you wanna leave information, uh, you're more than welcome to leave more information with the council members.
Everybody's received all the information, all the council members have received all my information.
Okay. The only thing we can do is, uh, I can, I can request that we, that we have this brought back up and we can take another look at it and see if, uh, maybe there's some type of adjustment that can be made. Are you guys, are you guys fine with at least, uh, bringing this back up to take a look at it?
And when will it be brought up?
I don't have a problem looking at the ordinance again.
If the council intended for people to go out and pollute the air once a month and enjoy their fire pit, then they should have written an ordinance that said you can burn once a month, but you've allowed every resident.
The council, the council didn't intend, somebody came to the council and said, we would like to burn and there were other people that wanted to burn too, so that's, that's how we, that's how we came up with that ordinance, it wasn't that we were looking for an ordinance for burning. Uh, people came from Burlington that liked to, they liked to burn. And again, it's no offense, it's nothing against you, but you have to, you have to realize this is twenty-five plus thousand people and you are the only person that has come forward with, with the issue.
Well, I've, I've talked, I've talked to several residents of Burlington that have a, a problem with smoke, but they are fortunate by winning the lottery of where they live and who their neighbors are, that they, they get smoke infrequently or it doesn't bother them as much as me.
Right on. We'll, we'll bring it back up, we'll have it brought back up, it'll probably be, how soon, uh?
If any of you have any, would like to challenge any of the information I gave you, I'm more than open to your questions or if you, if you don't, I know it's difficult for you to hear what's, I'm hearing every hour, every minute. I can't prove that my ears, I can't prove my ears are ringing, I can't, I can show you my swollen salivary glands in my mouth.
You can have it on as a discussion item on the October thirty-one council meeting.
Sounds good.
The, uh, the chances we take by doing that is that more people step forward and want to do more burning and want to, uh, to go, go further with it, I mean, it's.
I think I discussed with you what, uh, the response was in my neighborhood when less burning was requested. That it did produce the opposite result.
If I hear from those people firsthand, then it makes a huge difference in, in how I take action up here.
I discussed with you why some of my neighbors aren't speaking up. Who would like to?
I'll tell you what, it'd be, it'd definitely help you come October thirty-first, I would encourage you to try to get some of your neighbors to come down.
They don't, they don't need to come here, they, there's email, there's phone calls, there's, there's letters, there's, uh, other opportunities to, uh, to address this, and that's, I, I, I sympathize with you, Mark, I really do, I just.
I don't need sympathy, I don't want your pity, I don't want your sympathy. I would just like to regain some normalcy where I'm not constantly bothered by these symptoms just so my neighbors can recreate. I would like to be able to open the door without having to sniff to see if I can go outside. And I can't shut it out, there, in the information I gave you, it shows most of the smoke goes ahead and penetrates a house that's closed up.
October thirty-first, uh, come on back down and we'll.
I will be here, thank you for your time.
That's a work session.
That's a work session. Oh, okay.
So that's a discussion that you have?
Yeah, well, you won't be able to participate in that, but, uh, there's always.
We'll all have her's information right on.
Is anybody else from the audience, uh, discussion item, anything we haven't touched on tonight?
How everybody doing?
Good.
Good. Got a good heart and everything?
Can you adjust that microphone just a little bit? Can you pull that down just?
I ain't got my hearing aid on either. How's that?
It's good, better.
Okay. Now, I just happen to, happen to think about something and it's, it's word me to death, but, uh, young people here in the city of Burlington. I don't know if we got it, feel like we got an environment that just don't do nothing for, you know, young people. I remember my witty drug, drug store was up, up on, was that Jefferson Street? Miss Whitty, anyway, she called me one time and she, and, uh, said she had, she had a check and I said, well, how much is it? She said, eight hundred and fifty dollars. I said, whoa, whoa, whoa. I said, what do you think about it, Miss Whitty? She said, well, uh, I heard you talking about young people. And she was willing, willing to put the first, first, hit in there. And, uh, I think the vice president of the bank down here, he was the, he was on the school board at that time. So, um, it, we ended up, ended up with the eight hundred and fifty dollars. And that's when the elevators went into the, went into the auditorium down there. And all I could see were, you know, people that come to the council or something, it's never gonna get in there. This is the first county, uh, city council that I, that I've known of, uh, that wasn't following these, these, these instructions, that is that the city council had a report, had a report to the, to the mayor, the mayor, the mayor put, put the job, the job up, uh, for, uh, bid and whoever wanted to bid and had, you know, the best education and stuff like that. They were the one that got that job on them for, uh, you know, city council and, and for the, for the school. And that was, they worked hard. The reason I know my, the fellow, the person was superintendent at school there with my, uh, brother-in-law, James Davis in Quay City. And I said, what about, he said, mm-mm. You don't play that stuff down there, you got to have a good, the education and you turn your paperwork in and somebody look at it and find out who's got the best edu- education here for the, for the slot and this was filled it. It wasn't, you had to go to poll and vote. That forced the town to work together. You know what I mean? Work together and, uh, come together, meet, have meetings together and things like this for the welfare of those children. Now, I'm not getting mad at you guys, you know, I know, I know all of you. But the thing about it is, I, it's some people there, the school don't even do it. They, they have, they call you, they call you, saying?
Who?
The school.
For?
For, you know, just for, for to set up a meeting and talk about how to upgrade, you know, the kids, uh, children in the system. Actually, you got a perfect example here, up there on, uh, Maple Street, Salter School, Old Salter School. It looks, it begin, the pits begin to form and it looked like that we care more about what this guy want to, it's the same old trick they pull out there, wine guard pull out there on, on, uh, on, on them houses out there. He got his buddy in here, in here from, uh, from Denver, Colorado, and he come down here and he jackles up and talking about this here and he gonna do this and do that. And in the end, the thing, I don't know that, I don't have no use for that property now. Well, heck, you were getting a hundred and four thousand dollars a mo- a year for, for the tax money on, on that property, uh, before they tore them houses down. Well, he didn't get to, get to tear it down. It's thank God it stayed up a little longer, a little longer. But beside the point, the point of, I'd like to see some communication between the school system and the council, the city council. I mean, process that you work hard at and to get set up for scholarships and things like it there. And, uh, I'll guarantee you, 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 you do the right thing. You, that shooting and all that other junk, we, we, we gotta get out of here because the people themselves that's putting this money up for this, for this thing, for this, uh, Maple Hill Community Center. You see what I'm saying? If you, this, the, the guys got together, found the money for education, I don't know how you do that stuff, how you write those grants up, but I figure you can get a grant somewhere for that school up there, it's Salter, that's a perfect spot. And you could, what you, what you're doing, you're working to, to change this outward and inward scope of the next generation coming through that school, you know, and they'll have something. I, when I was on school board, I said, I took a walk through the school system. And I come to this one room up there and this, uh, youngest kid was in the back, he's all devil over, hold up, hold up. Silent asleep, now come on. So I asked the teacher, I said, you know, would you mind if I wake this young man up? Well, she didn't know who I was, because I haven't been that long on, 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 on the board. So, uh, she said, don't make me, you know, go right ahead. So I hop up there and go to the back, he was at the back of the school, the back, sitting there with his hands crossed, silent asleep. And the teacher was up front giving the instruction. So I said, it's gotta be some, something else, sure, there's more than what I'm seeing. So I go back there and I shake him, this young man, hmm? I said, what's the problem? Uh, sleepy. I said, okay, have you ate anything? No. All day long, you haven't eaten anything? You see what I mean? Good responsible teacher would have caught that.
Can, can I ask you, so, just so I can bring this, because I'm not sure what.
What?
I'm not sure what you're, what you're wanting.
What I'm saying, what I'm, what I'm saying, I want to take a, I want the council to get, meet with, meet with, call over there and meet with this, with the school system and try to, try to bring some positive influence in here. All we need is if you had a place, like, uh, Salter School up on Maple, if you had it, now, it belongs to, can't call the man's name now, who does it belong to? You got the big pipes and stuff up there.
Yeah, but we, I, I don't, I don't, I still don't understand what you mean with Salter School, I mean, for, for what?
Well, you, you need to talk to the school, that's a part of our community.
I mean, for, for, to you, I mean, to do what with Salter School, I still don't understand what you mean.
Get, make yourself available for a meeting with the school system and talk over the needs of the city of Burlington. How can you help these, help, help these mothers and things, like that little child there was back in the back, you know what happened?
But I don't, I, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, help, help me figure out, what, where, where does, where does Salter School come into play with this, I don't understand.
What would you do if you, somebody said, we'll, we'll give you a hundred, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three, three hundred thousand dollars to bring that up to form that it has the proper thing in there to help young people develop and grow?
Like a, like a youth program, a youth program?
Yeah, a youth program, it's a people program, it's a program of responsibility.
But I'm just, well, we, they got, they got one started right, they got one started at, right, right down the street, a half a block away at, at the old Maple Hill.
Right. My kids went up there. But see what I'm saying is that we, if, you give a man a stack of books, if he, if he don't read them, he ain't gonna do him no good. You see, they said it once about us. They say what you do, just give him a book. I know they said it because I was back in the fifties when it was said. But see, now, we got, y'all done a good, a, a good job, I don't, okay, you want for that. But it wouldn't hurt the children that walked up here, walked up here, see how casual you were to them and stuff like that there. What did you see in them kids that, that made that worthy? They need to see the same thing in, 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 in all of us.
Well, I, 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 I'll tell you this, I.
Sometimes when you ain't doing nothing, just up at the house and we'll sit down and talk about it.
I, I go to the schools and visit, but I mean, it's gonna take, if you think just from the council doing that, that it's gonna turn brilliant.
Me and my wife, you don't know, I know you don't, me and my wife, when she was living, spent five years over, over to Harthman School. We even had some teachers fighting it, fighting the program. You hear what I'm saying? Now, if you're the daddy and the father of this kid, you ain't gonna know nothing about it if you don't, if, if you don't get, get in the, get in the groove, groove with the flow and they say, hey, I'm going over here and work, and work with them. And you'll be surprised at what you find out. Wait till you get, you, you don't wanna be, you know, the mayor anymore. Bells started ringing, pianos started playing, it, it, people talk. But this is Burlington and I love, I like it, I love it. But I had to almost fight my way through, through the, you know, to move up the ladder out that cage. Because the government, the government, the government could control a lot of that, they said, okay, ten, uh, what was it? You had to have over ten, ten people or minority, or don't you lose your contract? And that was sort of basis of that. It's nothing, and I seen some things on that border, when, you know, we go up to the, the mornings and stuff like this here, and it, it, it wasn't right. That South Hill, whether you can close your mind to it or what, is dangerous. When you can't go to a gasoline store, because somebody gonna fire six shots in there, what happens if one of them shot, well, you busted through the tank and went into, went into their car? It blew and then them tanks underneath the ground right there gonna blow too. You see what I'm saying? And what would be the best thing to do? See, really, they ain't got nothing to do. You see what I'm saying? And this is a school kid, trail up a child in the way that he should go, you see what I mean? That's what the Lord tells us to do. We owe me, we owe me God too much in our, in our schools and the city council. We need to bring God back into, back into the position where he can, can help us run this life and run this race. But no, I mean, they, they, they fighting, got fighting mad at me and my wife for starting up that, starting up that, uh, uh, tutoring program of being Harthman. One on, and she said, I know she knew better because she was, she, she used to be a principal of a school. And this is what I'm saying. We need to get back to some old ways. You know, we can't get out here and do the boogaloo and the woogie-woogie doo and all that junk. We got to show some love. Y'all need to show, just like you showed that- What Mr. Derg, you have to show that those kids that come up here, you know, it's because you seen that they were interested in something else rather than just playing ping pong. And you try to inspire that. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Let some come out of this.
One minute, just a couple of things. Just real quick, I wanted to clarify for the people who's receiving the information. This one I didn't explain, it's black soot deposits on the inside louvers of a window air conditioner that only recirculates inside air in a house that the windows are never open and the doors are always shut. That's black soot that still was on the inside of the house. And these, I don't want to show on camera, but those, wintertime burning is also a problem now. I talked to the DNR field representative from Washington, Iowa. He looked at, those are video stills. He said both of those residences are putting out excessive amounts of smoke, but they were not into enforcement. And after talking to the Pope, our fire chief, he said he wasn't interested in enforcing that either, even though the DNR says that's grossly excessive.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience?
I just have one other thing I would say. Freddie Starley, five seventeen South Seventh Street. I do want to say I think the Parks Commission and the council that they did put in a new fountain down at DeEvan White and Gladys White Park and also upgraded a few of the outlets down there. These are some things, what I was mentioning to you, that should have been done years ago. And when I was down here the last time, that was caused some confusion. And that was what I was saying. It seemed like, you know, there's favoritism towards certain things and then others ask, make complaints and it takes years and years. And people get frustrated and then some people get on the council and they don't understand and then it causes more confusion. So these are some things-
That's not the case, though. Just so you know, that's not the case. There's no favoritism. Every park is put on a list and if anything, they've, since I've been on the council, there has been extra things done at that park that haven't been done at other ones that weren't on, that weren't scheduled to be on there.
I understand what you're saying, Mayor. I'm not disputing it, but I was just saying, in my judgment, I'm just, you know-
You have to wait till after the meeting. Okay, and then I'll come down and I'll grab that.
And some of the things that he was just mentioning, you know, we were trying to get some things for the young people and these are some issues that we'll discuss with Council Scott.
Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Tisland?
Just a reminder, the Travel Iowa vote goes through tomorrow. This is the image that Burlington's currently in the lead for, but encourage you to go to Travel Iowa Facebook or website and vote for Burlington. I think we're up by a thousand votes now. It closes tomorrow morning at ten a.m. But an opportunity for Burlington Snake Alley to be on the cover of the Iowa Travel Guide that goes out throughout the area, so.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Just wanted to let everyone know, there was a nice opportunity to support the arts here in Burlington. The Arts Center is celebrating its fiftieth on Friday from six to eight-thirty. So it's a nice little fundraiser for that. Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
I had a couple of things. The city manager brought to my attention, I made a huge mistake two weeks ago. And I, we sold a couple of properties and I stepped down off the council table and decided to bid on those properties. And then at the end of it, I voted to sell the properties to the other person because I was outbid. I should have accused myself or I should have abstained. And I really think, I knew that before it happened and wasn't thinking. And I apologize to everybody for that. Actually, I should have considered whether I was going to bid on those or not when the opportunity came to make the decision to sell the properties or to demolish them two weeks prior to that. So I won't let that happen again and I will be bidding on properties in the future because I've decided to get involved in that kind of redevelopment. So I will make certain that I take the appropriate actions and make sure what I plan is appropriate. And again, I apologize for that. All the council's been made aware of it, so it's public information. I want to make sure everybody understands that. The other thing that I want to mention, it's something that is bothering me terribly. And this message was on Facebook at four thirteen this afternoon. And it says, "Burlington Police, ambulants are responding to a shots fired incident at South Central Avenue. One person shot. Scanner traffic indicated possible domestic situation." That was provided to us by the Hawkeye. They have a Facebook page and they're telling everybody about this. So I know many people in this community will jump in their cars and go racing towards that to see what's happening and put themselves in jeopardy. I think this is the most careless action by a small business in this community that could take place. I think it's absolutely ridiculous. It's putting our emergency responders, it's putting our public, and it's putting those involved in that incident at risk. And I think it should be stopped. And I hope that Steve Delaney is listening and makes note of this, that the seriousness of this and the harm that he's putting people in. And I could be all alone in this, but I doubt it. I don't think that our public servants and our police department in particular appreciate this kind of information being spread. Now, if they think they're doing the city a service and maybe people are going to run away from this, that's not the case. You know, let them find out on their own. They don't need to take a Facebook site that is very popular because I've seen many of these come across and brought to my attention from others, not something that I've seen for myself. But I think this is just a very, very dangerous precedent and a very, very dangerous, could be a very, very dangerous situation for all concerns. Please just stop. You're a small business, you're not a god. That's all I had.
Okay. I missed the fireworks, but you ended really strong. I just want to say to, I want to say hi to one of my favorite music teachers in the house tonight. Mrs. Vaughn, how you doing? I'm the musical genius I am today because of that lady and God. I just want to say that we had City Day over the weekend. It was phenomenal. We, there were over a thousand people that came to City Day. It was just, it was unbelievable. And I just want to say to everybody that works for the city, that was there, that were doing tattoos and helping with the bounce house and just, they had all kinds of activities. I just want to say thank you to everybody because I thought the city employees really represented. It was a fantastic day. So again, I think they set the bar so high. I don't know what next year is gonna be like, but I'm already excited for it. The only other thing I wanted to say is we lost Chad McNamie, passed away. He worked at the Goodwill Store. And I got the opportunity, right now, they were dealing with losing him and saying goodbye and having a hard time. So I got a chance to talk to a lot of his coworkers and a lot of them have disabilities and that sort of thing. And so I just want to say to all my friends at Goodwill, to Chad McNamie's family, to those, my friends at Hope Haven, I just want to say that I'm still praying for all of you and that I enjoyed the visit that we had and Chad is in a better place. So anyways, just had a really good time with them and we always just need to be mindful there's somebody out there that has it worse than we do. Mayor Proton?
Leaf collection started today, I believe. So get your leaves bagged up and get them out by the curb and they'll come and get them for you. Remember, you can't put them in plastic bags and they don't want tape and/or staples in your leaf bags. You can put them in garbage cans like I do and then you can reuse that garbage can time after time after time. So, there you go.
All right.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, but you reserve the right.
I certainly do.
City manager?
Well, just a question. Leaf collection, if your route's, Friday route, they pick up on Monday?
Right.
So, and it rotates through the week that way for folks to keep a reminder of. I think that six weeks?
Sounds right.
Is it four weeks in a fall? Six weeks, six weeks. And a reminder, next week we do not have a meeting on Monday. So take a nice vacation for your continuing ed classes scheduled for next week.
I'm graduating.
Okay. Congratulations. And have a good week. Again, one thing that with Eric's group, they put an awful lot of time into getting ready for hosting the state chapter and will be putting a lot of time and effort into doing several sessions during that. So it's, I'd just like to commend them for the time that they've had to put in. And it stretches them, I think, and it's hard for them to keep up with other stuff going on. But it really is neat to see them taking a good lead role on a statewide organization.
That's all you got?
Your honor, I move that we adjourn at this time.
Second.
Hold on. Did you get, did you-
I have one thing. Oh, she, sorry.
I just wanted to say, I noticed as I was coming down here today, we had some power fluctuations out at Public Works. On my way to the meeting tonight, I noticed that they started to affect some of our traffic signals. So they went completely off and then they turned back on into the flashing red light mode. I don't know if Alliance has been having issues, but just wanted to warn people to be cautious. If that happens, just wait until they start fluctuating and then use it as a four-way stop. And then eventually they'll kick back into the regular motion, so.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Ready?
Adjourn.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
This means adjourn. Good night.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.